Good afternoon. I would like to call this a meeting of the Board of Trustees of the City University of New York to order. We will be going into executive session at the conclusion of our public session, and we do anticipate that we will reconvene in public session after the executive session. I'd like to read the following notice. The meetings of the Board of Trustees of the City University of New York are open to the public, and the Board welcomes the interest of those who attend. Public has ample opportunity to communicate with the Board. Public hearings on the Board's policy calendar are scheduled one week prior to the Board's regular meetings, and members of the public who wish to communicate with the Board are invited to express their views at such public hearings. In addition, the Board holds public hearings each year in all of the five boroughs, at which members of the public may also speak. In addition, written communications to the Board are routinely distributed to all trustees. The Board must carry out the functions assigned to it by law, and therefore cannot tolerate conduct by members of the public that disrupts its meetings. In the event of disruptions, including noise, which interferes with Board discussion, after appropriate warning, I will ask the security staff to remove persons engaging in disruptive conduct. The university may seek disciplinary and/or criminal sanctions against persons who engage in conduct that violates the university's rules or state laws, which prohibit interference with the work of public bodies. May I now request that everyone take a moment to mute your cellphone or BlackBerry? As usual, CUNY TV is transmitting this public session of this afternoon's meeting live on cable channel 75. The meeting is also being webcast live at www.cuny.edu/livestream, providing service worldwide via personal computers and mobile devices. The public session of this Board meeting will be available as a podcast within 24 hours and can be accessed via the CUNY website. We have several individuals at the table today who are here for their first regular Board meeting. I would like to welcome interim Executive Vice Chancellor and University Provost Julia interim Queens College President Evangelos Giesas, and CUNY Graduate School of Journalism Dean Sarah Bartlett. Welcome to you all. I want to extend my thanks to Trustee Carol Robles-Romond for serving as Chair of the Committee on Student Affairs and Special Programs, Trustee Brian Oberfeld for serving as Vice Chair of the Committee on Facilities Planning and Management, and indeed all the trustees who have joined the various standing committees of the Board. I also want to thank Wellington Chin for serving as Chair of the Search Committee to Find a New President of Kingsborough Community College, and the trustees who are serving as members of this important committee. Presidents, faculty, students, and alumni members of the committee have been appointed consistent with our guidelines. Our orientation handbook for new trustees is available online at http.ww.cuny.edu/About TrusteesHotmail. The Board of Trustees section of this CUNY website is a useful resource for everyone to look at, not only our new trustee colleagues. I want to extend the Board's deepest condolences to the family of Hunter College distinguished Professor Marie Philbin, who passed away on January 15th. Dr. Philbin, who came to Hunter in 1990, was a renowned neuroscientist and a beloved professor who inspired generations of students. She will be greatly missed by all who knew and worked with her. May I now call on Trustee Valerie Beal to announce college and faculty honors?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The City College Bernard and Anne Spitzer School of Architecture distinguished Professor Lance J. Brown assumed the presidency of the American Institute of Architects, New York Chapter for 2014. The City College Grove School of Engineering Associate Professor of Biomedical Engineering, Deborah August, was one of 102 researchers selected to receive the Presidential Early Career Award. And CUNY Dominican Studies Institute at the City College Assistant Librarian Nelson Santana was awarded the Seminar on the Acquisition of Latin America Library Materials Scholarship. Congratulations. LaGuardia Community College's EMT program for non-traditional adult learners who face educational and economic hurdles won the Continuing Education Association of New York's 2013 Exemplary Non-Credit Program Development Award. Congratulations. Mr. Chairman, that concludes my report.
Thank you. May I now call on Trustee Carol Robles-Romond to announce student and alumni honors?
Thank you, Chairman Schmidt. Baruch College student Sebastian Restrepo received a prestigious scholarship to study in Thailand in spring 2014, and Baruch College School of Public Affairs alumna Melissa Mark-Viverito was elected Speaker of the New York City Council on January 8th. Heartfelt congratulations. The City College Student Chapter of the National Society of Black Engineers was named Black Best Chapter at their Region One Conference, and the City College Grove School of Engineering, Biomedical Engineering Senior Tang Jin Hana was Dr. Reese Inep Dereli Korkup cohort of the ELAB NYC Six Month Training Program for Bio and Health Tech Entrepreneurs run by the New York City Economic Development Corporation. Congratulations. LaGuardia Community College students Yonian Nia and Xinying Wang took first place in the Northeast Division of the American Mathematical Association of Two-Year Colleges Competition. They also took third place in the New York State Mathematical Association of Two-Year Colleges Competition. Congratulations. Mr. Chairman, that concludes my report.
Thank you very much. You have a list of grants and gifts received by the university subsequent to the November 25th, 2013 meeting, available at the table and in the trustees' calendar book. I'd like now to call on Interim Chancellor William Kelly to present his report to the Board.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good afternoon, everyone. Permit me to begin by congratulating you, Mr. Chair, and the members of the Search Committee on the successful closure of the Chancellor's search process. I know I speak on behalf of the university community and pledging our support and commitment to working closely with Chancellor Designate Milliken during this period of transition. Indeed, I called him last week to convey my desire to be helpful in every way, and I look forward to meeting with him next week. So, very well done, sir. The spring semester officially begins today, but I want to report that January was a very busy month at the university. Nearly 17,000 students attended classes in our intercession. That's an increase of about 15% over the previous intercession enrollment record. It's been a great success. The winter intercession period was also fruitful for our ASAP initiative, which garnered, as I think most everyone knows, a great deal of attention through articles in The Atlantic, The Chronicle of Higher Education, The New York Times. In light of the extraordinary data results, the promising results that we've seen with ASAP, we intend to move forward with a very thoughtful and prudent expansion of the program. And I'd like to thank the Community College Presidents and Senior University Dean Mokalescu for their assistance. We had a very good meeting a couple of weeks ago to talk about how to move forward to expand the program without losing any of the advantages that we've realized so far. In that regard, on February 5th, excuse me, I will be participating in a panel discussion entitled "CUNY: The Road to Success." This is a panel organized by philanthropists and foundations which focus on K-16 education. The panel will examine factors that both foster and impede graduation from community colleges, and will take a look at promising programs, ASAP among them, that work to improve college success by offering support services to students. I'll be joined, I'm pleased to say, by President Matos Rodriguez, as well as representatives from the Good Shepherd Services and from MDRC. The panel is being moderated by our good friend Elizabeth Olafson, the Executive Director of the Stella and Charles Gutman Foundation. I think Philo and I are much looking forward to that occasion. Regarding federal legislation, on January 17th, I think as most people at this table know, President Obama signed the Consolidated Appropriations Act of 2014, which helps mitigate the effects of the sequestration and takes steps to reprioritize student aid and scientific research. As a result of the legislation, Pell Grants will increase to $5,730, and sequestration cuts for student aid programs that help our neediest students, including the Supplemental Education Opportunity Grants, have been restored. I joined SUNY Chancellor Nancy Zimfer and CEQA President Laura Anglin in sending letters of appreciation to those members of the New York Congressional delegation who supported the bill. Unfortunately, while it provides funding increases for NIH and NSF, I must note that their budgets are still well short of pre-sequester limits. This is an area where our efforts on behalf of those foundations and institutes will continue. At the same time, the development of the federal college scorecard continues, as I previously reported to the Board. As part of President Obama's plan to make college more affordable, he has proposed a rating plan for colleges on the basis of three metrics: access affordability and outcome. The assumption is that by providing students and parents with more information about colleges, particularly in those three areas, the President will encourage better choices among consumers. He also proposes to tie financial aid to rankings. I think, as I reported, I don't think anyone that I've spoken with has any confidence that financial aid will be increased or that congressional action will be taken on these proposals. That said, executive measures and actions can be taken, particularly in terms of ratings, which I think are likely to go forward. As you know, I've appointed an ad hoc committee chaired wonderfully by Ricardo Fernandez and with the support of David Crook and his team from the university's Office of Institutional Advancement. They have, at my direction, conducted a robust analysis that would take into account how CUNY would appear on the rankings and the ratings as they are currently being established. Our four-year colleges fared extremely well in the modeling that we've done. They rank in the top 36 of 555 public four-year institutions nationally. Two-year colleges also do quite well, ranking in the top half of public two-year colleges nationally, all of them, that is. As you'd expect, this is a highly contentious matter. Those colleges and universities, particularly in the private sector and the proprietary area, are not wild about the system. A lot of these groups, as well as various higher education trade associations, are sparing no effort to dilute the ranking exercise. We at CUNY, not surprisingly, endorse the effort, and we're working with the Federal Department of Education on the technical matters of constructing rankings and ratings. I want to thank Ricardo and David for their good work and their vigilance. I also want to note at this time the contributions of Interim Presidents Stuart Suss and President Matos Rodriguez, who both participated as invited members of White House Summit meetings on the future of higher education. It's a very fluid moment at the national level in terms of higher education, and I'm delighted that our colleagues are playing a critical role in rethinking these issues. On the state side, I attended Governor Cuomo's State of the State address in Albany on January 8th. Nothing better than Albany in January, my friends.[871.00][871.00](Laughter). The way that, I mean, the wind just cuts across the plaza there. CUNY was mentioned twice in the State of the State. First, the governor indicated that he would be proposing a second round of CUNY and SUNY 2020 Capital Project Initiatives. This is great, good news. This means another investment of $55 million in projects that will take place at our colleges. The first round, we are waiting for a final go-ahead, but are excited about those projects and delighted that we'll have an opportunity to pursue a second round of this funding. Thank the governor for that. Second, he unveiled a new scholarship program for high school students focusing on the top 10% of students, high school students in New York who choose to enroll in STEM disciplines. We are working with the governor's staff to advance this interesting program and to overcome some of the logistical hurdles involved. For one thing, New York City schools do not rank their students, so identifying the top 10% will require some level of twisting and turning. But we're delighted that this is on offer and are anxious to work with the governor's staff to achieve a successful program. Governor Cuomo released his executive budget on January 21st. As you all know, I shared with the Board and with the Presidents last Friday our preliminary analysis of the budget. Copies of that are around the table. On the operating side, senior colleges, the executive budget provides additional funding of $102.2 million. That's comprising $42.9 million in fringe benefits funding, and in addition to the university's revenue appropriation of $60.8 to recognize the tuition increases that this Board has approved. For the community colleges, the executive budget recommends an overall decrease of $2.8 million. However, the proposal does recognize our record-high enrollment levels in that sector and maintains continuing community college base aid at $2,422 per FTE. Regarding financial aid, the executive budget does not propose any changes to the TAP program. We, as you know, have great concern on that front, as the delta between the top TAP award and the tuition grows, the university is responsible for assuming that delta for those fully qualified students. That creates a major budgetary hole for us. So too does the lack of funding for mandatory step raises in our contract. We continue to work with our good partners and state government on these and other critical issues. On the capital side, the executive budget recommends $258 million in appropriation for senior college critical maintenance, delighted to have that, and $15.6 million in matching appropriations for community college projects that we already see funding from New York City. Want to again acknowledge and thank Iris Weinschall for extraordinary good work in these areas. As mentioned earlier, we also have an additional $55 million installment of CUNY 20, which was included in the executive budget. Overall, Mr. Chair, I'd emphasize that the executive budget provides financial stability and a number of important opportunities to build on the university's strengths and its assets, but also creates some challenges for us, particularly on the TAP and the mandatory cost side. Matt, Iris, anything to add to what we've just talked about? Matthew?
Thanks, Chancellor. The one thing I want to add is that at your seats, there is a copy of the university's fiscal '15 budget request, which outlines a lot of those items that the Chancellor talked about, that were not budget, the community college base aid increase, some of the mandatory cost increases. And so, I encourage all of you to take a look at the budget request. And as the adopted budget process gets underway, with the governor negotiating the budget with the Assembly and the Senate, we'll be involved in that process, and we'll keep you all posted as to the progress that we make in the adopted budget process.
Thank you, Matthew. I will be testifying on that executive budget in Albany on Thursday, February 6th, before the Senate Finance and Assembly Ways and Means Committee, and will be raising the issues that you just heard me discuss here. On the city side, the transition, the changing of the guard continues. We are working closely with newly-elected and appointed city government leaders, many of whom we know very well indeed, several of whom are graduates of the City University. And we are anxious to be helpful to them and also to explain to them the needs that this great university continues to experience. We look forward to working with our partners at all levels of government to move the university forward in the years ahead. It's an exciting time and should be a busy couple of months. That, Mr. Chair, concludes my report.
Thank you. Are there comments or questions from the trustees on the Chancellor's report?
Mr. Chair, a question. Inter-Chancellor, when is the panel of K-12 through 16? When and where is that?
It is, I think, February 5th. Let me double-check. Yes. February 5th, it's being held at the Chancellery, and would be delighted to have you join us, Charlie. Anyone else?
February 5th.
Other questions or comments? All right. Thank you very much, Mr. Chancellor. We'll now turn to items requiring our vote. I will present the, I'll move the adoption of the Chancellor's University Report for January 27th, 2014. You have a copy of this report on the table. May I have a second?
Second.
Are there comments or questions on the university report? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions? The university report is adopted. I'd like to move the approval of the minutes of the regular Board meetings and executive session of November 25th, 2013, and the minutes of the special Board meeting and executive session of January 15th, 2014. You have a copy of the draft minutes for both of these meetings in your meeting books. Let me take this opportunity to thank all of the trustees who participated in the January 15th special Board meeting, at which we appointed James B. Milliken as our new Chancellor. So, thank you all. May I have a second on the minutes?
Second.
Are there any revisions or comments on the minutes? All right. If all those who approve their adoption, please signify, say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? Abstentions? Those minutes are adopted. We'll turn next to the Committee on Fiscal Affairs. May I call on Trustee Joe Loda?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Committee on Fiscal Affairs met on January 6th, 2014. After approval of the minutes from the previous meeting on November 4th, the Committee approved the following resolutions. Calendar Item 3A is a resolution requesting that the Board of Trustees of the City University authorize the General Counsel to execute a contract on behalf of the university to provide audit, tax, and advisory services for fiscal year 2014 through fiscal year 2019. The contract shall be awarded on the basis of best value to a responsive and responsible offer, after public advertisement, timely submission of sealed proposals pursuant to law and university regulations. The RFP solicitation and evaluation process shall be conducted by the university. The initial term shall be for three years, and the contract shall include up to two one-year options for the university to renew in its best interest. Such purchase shall not exceed a total estimated cost of $2 million during the initial term of the contract. Mr. Chairman, I approve, I move the approval of Calendar Item 3A.
May I hear a second?
Second.
Are there any questions for the Committee on 3A? Not all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions? 3A is adopted.
Calendar Item 3B is a resolution to authorize the General Counsel to execute a university-wide service contract with Conica Menalter, which will not exceed the total estimated cost of $1.5 million. The university has nearly 2,000 Conica copier machines, and the continued operation is critical to the day-to-day operations of the university. Conica has provided the required maintenance services to the City University under a New York State Office of General Service contract, which has now expired and has not been renewed. To prevent the interruption of services, Conica will continue to provide these services through June 30th, 2014. The university will conduct a competitive procurement to provide these services as of July 1st, 2014. Mr. Chairman, I move the approval and the adoption of Calendar Item 3B.
I'll second that. Are there questions about, on 3B? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions? 3B is adopted.
Calendar Item 3C is a resolution to authorize the General Counsel to execute a university-wide contract with the John Hopkins University Press for online access to the Project Muse Standard Collection, a unique not-for-profit collaboration between libraries and publisher supporting a diverse array of research needs at academic libraries worldwide. CUNY has been utilizing Project Muse for many years, and it is integral, and it is an integral resource for the colleges. This renewal shall not exceed a total estimated cost of $600,000. Will provide continued access to the project from January 1st, 2014, through December 31st, 2016. Mr. Chairman, I move the approval and adoption of Calendar Item 3C.
I'll second that. Are there questions on the item? If not, all in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Abstentions? 3C is adopted.
Calendar Item 3D is a resolution to authorize General Counsel to execute a university-wide contract with the American Chemical Society for online access to its collection of academic journals. The university has been utilizing this subscription for many years, and it too is an integral resource for the colleges. This contract will provide access for a period of three years, from January 1, 2014, through December 31, 2016, and shall not exceed a cost of $863,000. Mr. Chairman, I move the approval and adoption of Calendar Item 3D.
I'll second that. Are there questions on the item for the Committee? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions? Adopted.
Calendar Item 3E is a resolution to execute a contract on behalf of Brooklyn College to purchase multimedia equipment and installation services for smart classrooms. Such purchase shall not exceed a total estimated cost of $3.1 million for the initial three-year term and up to two one-year renewals, ending January 30th, 2018. Brooklyn College retrofits 20 to 30 legacy classrooms each year with the smart technology capabilities, but there continues to be more demand for smart classrooms than the college can meet, and the ultimate goal is to facilitate advanced technology-assisted instruction and to enhance pedagogy and learning for students in all instructional spaces. Mr. Chairman, I move the approval and the adoption of Calendar Item 3E.
I'll second that. Are there questions on the item for Brooklyn College? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions? That item is adopted.
Following the approval of Action Items A, B, C, D, and E, Chief Investment Officer Janet Krone gave an update on the university's portfolio performance through November 30th, 2013. Then I proceeded to give an update on the meetings of the Subcommittee on Audit, which was held on December 4th, 2013. Mr. Chairman, this concludes my report.
All right. Thank you very much. We'll turn next to the Committee on Faculty, Staff, and Administration. May I call on, on Trustee Valerie Beal?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I will now present for the Board's approval the items that the Committee for Faculty, Staff, and Administration considered at its meeting on January 6th. Our agenda consisted of policy items, naming opportunities, and the appointments of a number of new distinguished professors. For purposes of expediency, I will take one calendar item out of order. I will begin with Item 4A, Adoption of an Investment Policy Statement for the University's Optional Retirement Program and Tax-Deferred Annuity Plan. This is an important initiative for to provide some background. CUNY sponsors and maintains two employee-defined contribution retirement plans, the Optional Retirement Program, known as the ORP, and the Tax-Deferred Annuity Plan. Because New York Educational Law, Article 125A, which established the CUNY ORP, provides that the university's Board of Trustees will give due consideration to the stability of the contracts used to fund the plan, the adoption of an investment policy is a prudent action. The policy will provide CUNY with a clear statement of the objectives and the processes that are going to be followed in selecting and monitoring retirement investments. In the private sector, retirement investment policies are required under the Employee Retirement Income Security Act, ERISA. As a public-sector university, CUNY is not governed by ERISA, and so it is not required to have a retirement investment policy. However, CUNY certainly considers ERISA rules and regulations to constitute best practices. It should be noted that the adoption of an investment policy does not in any way constitute investment advice to plan participants. Its objectives will apply only to the selection Its objectives will apply only to the selection of available investments. The Board Committee on Faculty, Staff, and Administration has carefully reviewed the investment policy and approved it for submission to the Board with the following friendly amendment. The Committee approves the policy for the submission to the Board with the understanding that a Subcommittee will move forward with developing working procedures and protocol for implementation of the policy. Mr. Chair, I would like to update and say that the, we have had our first meeting of the Subcommittee, and I want to thank Professor Martel, Vice Chancellor Waters, and Sapienza and their staff for moving expeditiously on this item. Mr. Chair, I present item 4A for the Board's consideration.
Thank you, I'll second that item. Are there questions on item 4A, on the investment policy? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed abstentions? That is adopted.
I would now like to jump ahead on the calendar and present another policy matter, item 4-O, which revises the university's policy on domestic violence and the workplace. The policy is being updated to comply with a directive from the New York State Office for the Prevention of Domestic Violence instructing agencies to outline clear procedures for the handling of orders of protection that employees provide to them. CUNY's policy therefore has been revised to adopt the language suggested by the state. Mr. Chair, I present item 4O for the Board's consideration.
I'll second that. Are there questions on the, on the revised policy? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed abstentions? That's adopted.
Item, calendar items 4B and C are two naming opportunities at Baruch College, which I will present together. These namings, which reflect monetary gifts totaling $4.5 million, are as follows. The Alan G. and Mary E. Aaronson Student Center and the Klavner Field Pedestrian Plaza. The Committee on Faculty, Staff, and Administration has reviewed these matters and is pleased to recommend their approval. Mr. Chair, I present items 4B and 4C for the Board's consideration.
Second those. Are there questions on the items? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed abstentions? Those items are adopted.
Thank you. Items 4D through 4M involve a number of naming opportunities associated with the renovation of the main library at Hunter College, which I will present as a group. The monetary gifts associated with these matters, which are listed in the calendar, total nearly $2.5 million. Mr. Chair, I present items 4D through 4M for the Board's approval.
Thank you, I'll second those items. Are there any questions on the Hunter College naming opportunities? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed abstentions? Those items are adopted.
Thank you. Item 4N designates six new distinguished professors effective February 1st, 2014. The Committee has reviewed each of these outstanding appointments and is pleased to recommend their approval. They are Arthur Apter, Distinguished Professor of Mathematics at Baruch College; David Joslett, Distinguished Professor of Art History at the Graduate Center; Joan Richardson, Distinguished Professor of English at the Graduate Center; Jeffrey Mongraine, Distinguished Professor of Art and Art History at Hunter College; Richard McCoy, Distinguished Professor of English at Queens College; and Jay Rosen, Distinguished Professor of Mathematics at the College of Staten Island. Mr. Chair, I am pleased to present these appointments for the Board's approval.
I will, happy to second those. Are there questions about any of these appointments? Seeing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed abstentions? Those appointments are made.
Mr. Chair, I am delighted to tell the Board that all of our new distinguished professors are here with us today. I therefore would like to invite Professor Wallerstein, Interim President Chase Robinson, Professor, President Rob, Interim President Gizes, and Interim President Fritz to come forward. Mr. Chair, I will now call on President Wallerstein.
Thank you, thank you, Madam Chair. I'm delighted to present Dr. Arthur W. Apter, Professor of Mathematics. Professor Apter has taught at Baruch College for over 23 years and he is an internationally-known mathematical logician. In addition to holding the rank of Full Professor at Baruch, he is also a member of the doctoral faculty at the CUNY Graduate Center. Arthur Apter is widely recognized for his research on set theory and he is a truly prolific scholar. His body of work dates from 1985 and since that time, he has published over 120 articles in U.S. and international refereed journals. Professor Apter has been the recipient of numerous research grants during his distinguished career, including most recently from the National Science Foundation. He has presented papers and delivered invited lectures at more than 85 institutions and professional meetings, including leading research universities in the United States, Europe, and Asia. Arthur Apter's teaching career at Baruch College has been long and productive. His dedication to teaching is reflected in strong student course evaluations. And he has also served at the doctoral dissertation committee for numerous graduate students during his tenure at the CUNY Graduate Center. Indeed, Professor Apter's great success at both, as both a scholar and a teacher, make him richly deserving of promotion to the title of CUNY Distinguished Professor. It is an honor for me to present him to the Board this afternoon. Professor Apter?
Thank you, President Wallerstein and members of the Board. I am deeply appreciative and greatly humbled by this honor that you have bestowed upon me and I'd like to thank you all very much for your support. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
President Robinson?
Thank you very much. Ladies first, perhaps? It is a great privilege for me to introduce Joan Richardson for appointment as distinguished professor. Joan Richardson is a leading scholar of American literature and intellectual history and one of the most preeminent Americanists of her generation. An extraordinarily productive and gifted writer and researcher, her publications include five highly acclaimed books, in addition to innumerable essays and articles. Two volumes on Wallace Stevens, for example, A Natural History of Pragmatism for another, Pragmatism and the American Experience for yet another. Joan has contributed enormously to the Graduate Center and to the life of the English program. She is the consummate campus citizen, having served as Executive Officer and Deputy Executive Officer for the English program, Acting Deputy Executive Officer for the program in comparative literature, and Executive Officer for the Master of Arts in Liberal Studies. She is also a hugely popular and inspirational teacher, having developed a repertory of brilliant and rigorous courses on the theme of American aesthetics during the 19th and 20th centuries. Last but certainly not least, Professor Richardson embodies the very best of CUNY. After earning her bachelor's degree at Queens College and her PhD at the Graduate Center, Joan began her teaching at LaGuardia in 1975, joining the doctoral program in 1987 while continuing to teach at LaGuardia. In 1994, she was appointed to the English program at the Graduate Center. We are extremely fortunate to count Joan as a colleague. We are as grateful that her scholarly contributions and her commitment to the university will continue to enrich us for some time. Joan?
Thank you very much. President Robinson's assistant asked me to prepare a few words and I have, she said two minutes, it's two and a quarter. I am honored and moved by the support and recognition that this appointment reflects. I want to thank the members of the administration of the Graduate Center, as well as those in the Chancellor's office and those on the Board of Trustees for their consideration, for their time. My gratitude for this honor extends beyond me to my mother's generation. She and her two sisters were children of Greek immigrants to New York City. My grandfather arrived first, not too many years after the Brooklyn Bridge was opened. He was hoping to make his fortune and did, establishing a contracting company that painted the bridge and eventually many others in various parts of the country. After establishing himself, he returned to the small Aegean island where he was born to marry his second cousin. She arrived with their first daughter in 1910 and moved into the apartment on Union Square that he had readied. He was an unusually liberal-minded man, had been educated in Alexandria before coming to the New World. Eventually, two more daughters were born. My grandfather wanted his three daughters to be educated in the same way they would have been, had they been sons. My grandmother, however, kept the habits of the Old World. As the girls came of age, my grandfather insisted they attend college. My grandmother insisted they continue to live at home. The three sisters attended Hunter College, then of course, all girls. There was no question in my mother's mind when it was time for me to attend high school that I would apply to Hunter administered by the Board of High Education. I was accepted. There were then between 400 and 500 girls in the ninth through 12th grades. The greater number of our instructors were Hunter College faculty. Not only was the education superb, but we were regularly reminded in assemblies of our responsibility to give back in some way what we had been given through the system of public education. My parents die as I was finishing at Hunter. I went on to Queens College. I had not applied anywhere else. When I began there, when I began, there was a dress code for young women. During my last year, there were riots, broken glass, tactical police force, helmeted on their motorcycles zooming around campus. Amidst it all, I had received a first-rate education, particularly in the Philosophy Department and Honors Program. I went on to what was then called the Graduate School and University Center on 42nd Street. I was again privileged to work with the faculty I did. I taught as an adjunct on many CUNY campuses. After completing my degree, needing to stay based in New York City for family reasons, I was appointed on a full-time line at the newly-established LaGuardia Community College. After my second book was published, I was appointed to the Graduate Center, as Chase has told you. The rest is history, as they say. I have joked for a long time that I should be made the CUNY mascot and/or always appear at public educations wearing the CUNY colors. Thank you all very, very much.
President Rob? Oh, I'm sorry.
I have one more.
Apologize, my
It is my distinct pleasure to introduce David Joslett and his appointment as distinguished professor. David comes to the Graduate Center from Yale, where he was Carnegie Professor and where he also served as Chair of the Department of Art History from 2006 until 2009. He taught at Harvard, where he earned his PhD, at MIT, where he studied, and at the University of California at Irvine. In 2010, he was the Kirk Varnado Visiting Professor at the Institute of Fine Arts at NYU. Professor Joslett is a scholar of international reputation, recognized for his mastery of both contemporary and modern art history and criticism. Curator, juror, essayist, a prolific writer and researcher. He has authored several books, articles, and essays, all as original as they are trenchant and intrepid, works that not merely solve problems of interpretation and advance knowledge, but open up genuinely new fields of inquiry. Books on Marcel Duchamp, American Art Since 1945, Feedback, Television Against Democracy, and After Art 2013. In recognition of David's outstanding scholarly work, he's garnered prestigious awards from the University of California, the Mellon Foundation, the Clark Institute, and many others. He's also known as an engaging and generous colleague and a devoted teacher and mentor to his students. To sum up the reception the news of his appointment at the Graduate Center has produced, I leave it to a reviewer who put it, "A brilliant move, a brilliant department that will make the art history program at the Graduate Center the unrivaled institution in North America for the study of modern and contemporary art." I am enormously proud to have David Joslett joining the Graduate Center and the university. And I am enormously proud and confident that he will be a tremendous asset to the university. David?
Thank you, thank you, Chase, for that really generous introduction. I'm, and thank you all for making this appointment possible. I'm really thrilled to join the Graduate Center. It's, was very appealing to me for a number of reasons. Because my work has dealt a lot with how images circulate as opposed to how, what images mean by just reading them like a text, I'm particularly excited that there are very important and dynamic initiatives at the Graduate Center in globalization and also in digital cultures that I look forward hopefully to participating in. And also, as Chase mentioned, the Graduate Center has, for many, many years, been one of the most important educators of contemporary art historians and I feel very honored to join their ranks. So, thank you very much.
President Rob?
It's said that a picture's worth a thousand words, so we're very honored to provide the trustees with a catalog of the extraordinary work of the candidate for distinguished professorship, Jeff Mongraine. But since it's me, I will say some words anyway. It has been said that Jeff Mongraine is to ceramics what Raven Carver is to the short story and Andy Warhol is to printmaking. He has single-handedly taken ceramics, an undervalued, even isolated medium throughout most of the 20th century, and moved it squarely to the center of art practice, where it now intersects with all of the 3D arts. His influential and groundbreaking work has brought him to the very top of the ceramics field. The Smithsonian Institute of American Art recently invited him to give a five-hour oral history for the National Archives of American Art, a distinction bestowed on just 25 visual artists in the U.S. each year. The Smithsonian will interview him annually, every year, for the rest of his artistic career. Jeff has recently had an outstanding mid-career retrospective that toured five nationally-recognized museums and included a catalog of his ceramic sculptures, which you have in front of you. He has had 16 solo museum exhibitions and has an upcoming solo exhibition of his work at the prestigious Museum of Art and Design later this year. Glenn Brown, the foremost critic and historian of ceramics and ceramic sculpture in America, considers Mongraine's work as central to the development of the discipline and particularly influential among younger artists. Jeff is one of the handful of ceramicists who have dissolved the barrier between craft and fine art by merging the material and language of clay with minimalism, conceptualism, and innovative site-specific projects. His studio practice leads the field and is cutting-edge because he has forged new ceramic processes, new approaches to installation, and approach to site work that is once poetic, spiritual, and scientific. Throughout his 18 years at Hunter, Jeff has also been an extraordinary colleague and citizen. He's been a member of the faculty since 1995 and most recently was instrumental in our move to our extraordinary new facility at 205 Hudson Street. Jeff has been a leader in helping us raise and use the philanthropic gifts that we've been lucky to have from both the Zabar family and a recent fellowship for our graduates. But perhaps his major accomplishment is the ceramics department itself, which he has led since coming to Hunter 18 years ago. He transformed this into a pedagogical model for bringing the highest caliber of practicing artists, ceramicists, and sculptors into the classroom directly. This is due to his connections with his colleagues and their desire to do anything that Jeff is doing. He is a beloved instructor and mentor to colleagues and students alike and is known for his power to communicate about art and for his progressive, hands-on approach as an educator and a curator. We are all at CUNY fortunate to have Jeff Mongraine in our midst. His work only grows in complexity, stature, and reach over time. At mid-career, at the height of his powers and influence, he will continue to play a definitive role in the future of art and sculpture, transforming how we think about ceramics conceptually and technically, and offering a world of opportunity and inspiration to Hunter students and students of art everywhere. I am proud to call Jeff a friend and an advisor. His personality is like his art, graceful, charming, and insightful. Thank you, Jeff, and thank you to the Board for this opportunity.
Thank you, President Rab. I'm very touched and honored by your comments, and I would like to thank the board for this great privilege to be a distinguished professor at CUNY College. As President Rab said, I have been here eighteen years, and I must say, it is a deep privilege and honor for me to be a faculty member in this art department. I have seen it grow in the last eighteen years, particularly since 2001, with great programs, and we've also moved from a building, as many of you know, on Forty-first Street, which had its, let's say, health and safety problems, to a wonderful new space down in Tribeca. There is a reason that the Hunter MFA program is in the top ten programs in the United States, and we're also perhaps the largest MFA program. Besides the growth of that part of our program, I'd also say our gallery has grown tremendously, too. One of our new colleagues, Joaquin Basaro, which President Rab was astute enough to steal away from the Museum of Modern Art, as one of their curators, and it's been another major development. Our students get to see great artists brought in by the Zabar Visiting Artists Program. I would say approximately about a half of them have received the MacArthur Genius Award. It is a vibrant, great program, and I'm really privileged to be a part of it. And also, having the commitment from President Rab and my colleagues, supported me the time to pursue my artwork, take the time to go out and do exhibitions in museums and cathedrals. And again, I'll just repeat, it's a great privilege, and thank you all very much.
It is a great privilege for me to introduce distinguished professor Richard McCoy of the Queen Scholars Department of English and the Graduate School PhD Program in English. Professor McCoy is a distinguished critical voice in the study of the interrelationship of literature and politics in the Elizabethan period. He is also recognized as a major cultural historian of the early modern period in England and as a distinguished voice in the field of Elizabethan drama. His most recent book, Faith is Expire, bears witness to his central position in his expert studies. Professor McCoy is a beloved and devoted teacher at Queen Scholars, and also, since his appointment to the Graduate School, he has supervised nine dissertations. And so, it is a great pleasure for me to introduce distinguished professor Richard McCoy.
Thank you very much again, then. Inspired somewhat by Joan's lovely story of her own immigrant history, here I want to recount my own, which started with me migrating from Berkeley, where I graduated in seventy-five, to New York in 1975, when the bottom dropped out of the academic market and it looked like the bottom was dropping out of New York itself. My wife had found a job at Columbia, and I tagged along, looking for work, adjuncting, teaching high school, and then finally getting a postdoc. Offered one at the Graduate Center, but I got a two-year at Columbia. And then, in 1979, was hired at Queens College. And to cut to the chase, I've lived happily ever after, ever since. It's been a great privilege to teach at Queens and at the Graduate Center. The students at Queens College are stupendous, extraordinary students. The same is true of the Graduate Center. Wonderful colleagues at both places. I will just recount that Bill Kelly, Joan Richardson, and I all joined the English program at the Graduate Center the same year, so you can see the quality of people we have And finally, I want to thank you, all of you, the trustees and the administrators of this splendid institution, for your support and for this honor. I'm very grateful. I'm very grateful for your support in improving CUNY over the course of my thirty years there. It's really, its luster has been fully restored, and I'm honored to be a member of it. Thank you.
On behalf of the College of Staten Island, I'm extremely pleased, and I'd also say humbled, to voice to the board my unequivocal support for Professor Jay Rosen and to thank them for naming him a distinguished professor in the City University of New York. Under the guidance of Provost Fred Nader himself, a distinguished professor, and who took the time to be with us here tonight, I know both of them have traveled many time zones in the last twenty-four hours from Israel to be here for the board meeting tonight. The nomination was thoroughly reviewed by our distinguished professor nominating committee, the Department of Mathematics, the College P&amp;B Committee, all of whom voted unanimously, and I'd have to add enthusiastically to support his promotion to distinguished professor. The documentation submitted on behalf of Professor Rosen sets forth a comprehensive and impressive chronicle of his accomplishments as a national and internationally renowned mathematician and scholar. Dr. Rosen's stature as one of the leading probabilists in the world is clearly reflected in his remarkable record of NSF funding, in his publications, refereed articles, and in the external letters that the college received. These letters were some of the most respected mathematicians working in probability theory today, many of them themselves distinguished professors or regents professors. All referees offered unmitigated praise for Professor Rosen's important and groundbreaking scholarship. In addition, Professor Rosen has brought great renown to CUNY by organizing and running the Probability Seminar at the Graduate Center, the Northeast Probability Seminar for the last ten years. His contributions to these events, which bring together mathematicians from across America and throughout the world, elevate the image of our university as a home of scholars of worthy note. In addition to his renown as a scholar, I think it's significant that Professor Rosen excels in other areas as well. He has been an outstanding teacher and has taught courses and mentored students at all levels, from general education offerings to advanced electives in the major, to doctoral courses, seminars, and symposiums. I find it extremely encouraging that an individual with Professor Rosen's level of scholarship is willing and able to interact with our undergraduate general education students. Therefore, from every perspective used to measure academic merit, scholarship, teaching, and service, Dr. Rosen is a role model for all CUNY faculty and sets the highest standards for his peers throughout the university. In sum, the appointment of Dr. Rosen as distinguished professor to join CUNY's, quote, "formidable group of elite scholars, researchers, and creative art," this recognizes the enhancement he will continue to bring to the academic life of both the College of Staten Island and to the entire City University of New York. Thank you, and I introduce...
I want to thank everybody for this great honor, and especially, I want to thank the College of Staten Island. I was hired in 1986 with explicit understanding of trying to build up a research-oriented math department. Staten Island had originally been a community college and joined with a junior college. And consequently, when I came, there was very little research going on. And I was supported by the administration then in terms of reduced teaching load, and I think I've succeeded now in hiring a lot of very good people. Staten Island, the College of Staten Island, in terms of several important metrics like National Science Foundation grants and Math Signet citations, has been among the top two or three colleges in the CUNY system for years now. And in fact, I hope that some of my colleagues there will also eventually become distinguished professors here. The upshot is that our undergraduates are exposed to teachers who are very much involved in cutting-edge research, and I think this shows it has a great effect on them. Finally, I also want to thank the Graduate Center also for its support. Mentioned that, in many ways, in terms of faculty from all the colleges and the central lines, the Graduate Department of Math has the potential of being a really great department, and I hope that the university will continue its support in terms of students and postdoctoral students. And, well, thank you again for everything.
Mr. Chair, that concludes my report.
Thank you very much. We'll turn next to the Committee on Facilities Planning and Management. May I call on Trustee Frida Foster?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The Board of Trustees Committee on Facilities Planning and Management considered four items at its meeting January 6, 2014. These action items are listed in this board meeting as calendar items 6A through 6D. 6A: City College of New York Chilled Water System Pressure Independent Valves. To authorize the New York Power Authority, or NIPA, to execute a construction contract on behalf of City College of New York for the provision of pressure-independent control valves on the chilled water system for all City College, excuse me, City College of New York North Campus buildings, with the exception of Marshaq Science. The contract shall be awarded to the lowest responsive and responsible bidder pursuant to the law and the NIPA/CUNY Energy Cost Reduction Contract, or ENCORE, approved by the board on February 24 of 2008. For some time, City College's North Campus buildings have had to rely on aging chilled water control valves for cooling. With the construction of the Advanced Science Research Center and the City College of New York Science Building, there will be even more need for new pressure valves to control the flow from the refrigeration plant. 6B: York College Greenhouse and Animal Housing HVAC Upgrade. To authorize the General Counsel to execute a construction contract on behalf of York College for the upgrade of the mechanical equipment for both the greenhouse and animal housing labs located in the Academic Core Building at 9420 Guy R. Brewer Boulevard. The contract cost shall be awarded to the lowest responsive and responsible bidder after public advertisement and sealed bidding pursuant to the law and university regulations. The contract cost and the cost of associated construction inspections shall be chargeable to the City Capitol Project 042YC029-009 for an amount not to exceed $2,165,000. The contract shall be subject to approval as to form by the University Office of the General Counsel. The HVAC systems in both the greenhouse and the animal housing area in York College's main building are in poor condition. This resolution will provide for their upgrade and the expansion of the greenhouse area to include an outdoor or terrace classroom. 6C: Baruch College Administration Building Fire Alarm System. To authorize the City University Construction Fund to amend a contract with the firm of Simmons Industries Incorporated to purchase additional design services and the installation of additional devices for the fire alarm system that Simmons recently installed at Baruch College under the existing New York State Office of General Services contract. The total cost of all such additional purchases shall be charged to the State Capitol Construction Fund, project number 2807909999, of an amount not to exceed $300,000. The contract amendment shall be subject to approval as to form by the University Office of General Counsel. In order to comply with new New York City Fire Department Code requirements, additional services and devices are needed for Baruch College's administration building. 6D: Baruch College Field Building Fire Alarm System Upgrade. To authorize the City University Construction Fund to execute a contract with the firm of Simmons Industries Incorporated to modify the existing fire alarm system as required to upgrade the system to meet new code requirements by the New York City Fire Department. The total cost of the installation of the modification shall be chargeable to the State Capitol Construction Fund, project number 2807909999, for an amount not to exceed $2, 000,000. The contract shall be subject to approval by the University Office of General Counsel. Modifications to the existing fire alarm system and the field building at Baruch College are needed in order to comply with the New York City Fire Department Code requirements. I hereby request your approval of these calendar items.
Thank you. I would like to second the motion on all four items. Are there questions for the committee on any of these items? If not, all in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Abstentions? All those items are adopted.
Thank you. That concludes my report.
Thank you very much. We'll now conclude this part of the public meeting. We are going into executive session, and we do anticipate a brief resumption of the public meeting after the executive session. We'll resume the public meeting of the Board of the City University of New York Trustees. We have one matter to take up, and I will move the resolution. Resolution number six, City University of New York Appointment of Vice Chancellor for Budget and Finance. Resolve that the Board of Trustees of the City University of New York approves the appointment of Matthew Sapienza as Vice Chancellor for Budget and Finance at a salary to be approved by the interim chancellor. Matt Sapienza has served with distinction for nine years at CUNY, first as Budget Director, then as Associate Vice Chancellor for Budget and Finance. In the latter title, Mr. Sapienza reported to Mark Shaw, who recently retired from his position as Senior Vice Chancellor for Budget, Finance, and Fiscal Policy to become co-director of the CUNY Institute for State and Local Governance, and he will also be a senior advisor to the Chancellor for Fiscal Policy. In light of Mr. Sapienza's increased responsibilities, we believe it's appropriate that his position be reclassified as that of a vice chancellor. May I have a second?
Second.
No, I second.
I will only say, Matt, that in the executive session, there was a chorus of praise for your knowledge, your ability, your openness, your willingness to listen, and your integrity. So, I think we're all very enthusiastic about this. We should technically take a vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions unanimously carried. Matt?
Thank you. Thanks so much, Chair Schmidt, and so humbled, and I want to thank all of the trustees for their support and their faith in me, and especially Chairman Schmidt for all his support over the years. I especially want to acknowledge Trustee Loda, who's been terrific to work with over the last several years on the fiscal committee. And so, I take this honor very seriously, and I'm so grateful to the trustees. I want to thank Chancellor Kelly again for his support, and I'm so grateful, not only for his support, but I'm grateful for the opportunity. I've worked with him so closely over the last several months. It's really been an honor to do so. I want to thank all of my fellow members of the chancellery. They're just tremendous partners to work with every day. Especially, I want to thank Executive Vice Chancellor Dobrin, who's been a real mentor to me over the nine-and-a-half years I've been here, and I can never thank Alan enough. Mark Shaw. There's so many people in city and state government that would love to pick his brain, and I get to do it every day, so I know how fortunate I am and how fortunate the university is to have someone as talented as Mark working here. I would be totally remiss if I didn't take the opportunity to acknowledge and thank Ernesto Malave, who brought me to the university nine-and-a-half years ago, and I'll be forever grateful to Ernesto. My staff and the...
My staff in the, in the Office of Budget and Finance, just tremendous work ethic, so smart people, especially my, my leadership team. All the good things that come out of my office are due to their good work. And I really need to thank Chancellor Matt Goldstein, who was, again, such tremendous, gave me such tremendous support, great counsel and advice over the years, and I really feel privileged to have been part of his administration during his historic tenure at CUNY. Look forward, I'm really excited about our new era here at CUNY under Chancellor Milliken. Look forward to working with him. And just in summary, it has been by far the best professional experience that I've ever had working here at CUNY. Such an important institution in the city of New York, and I'm so privileged to, to be part of CUNY and to accept this appointment. So, thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, that concludes our public business for this board meeting, which is now adjourned.